...2004, if you would read the cash and say pledge against the Graceland League.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up on the agenda is approval of Greg Leach's meeting minutes from October 7th. Everyone has been furnished a copy of these last Friday, given time to look over those things, so if there aren't any questions or concerns about the minute, I'll entertain the motion in a second to approve them.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion by Clayton, second by Terry, on the favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, the approval, ratification of bills. If there aren't any concerns with those or questions, I'll entertain the motion in a second to approve those.
Oh, somebody with the motion, ma'am.
I second it.
Motion by Billy, second by Clayton, on the favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're down to visitors. I'm assuming that somebody, y'all have a spokesperson for, or you can all speak, we don't mind, however you want to do it, is there any, who would like to address the council that's in the crowd?
I'll go first. Kind of the... First of all, take two from the Grayson County High School tennis program and partly strong supporter of a health, fitness, sports complex. I speak from you from just been healthy minded, but we're, this group of individuals standing behind me has, first of all, it's a learning experience for these young individuals out here and I want to, even standing to say the pledge and how a committee such as this is designed and orchestrated. So, we have met as a team and of an organization and the first thing that this group decided they wanted to do in addressing support in our health complex was to submit letters to the city council. So, I had dropped those off a couple of weeks ago, so I hope that you have had time to read those letters from our individuals currently on the, on the serving as tennis team. They are, the current members are taking this platform and running with it and I let them, they are our deciding voice and they are their voice. So, it's been an opportunity for me and a privilege for me to stand behind young leaders if I've done forty-plus years. Today, we have some people from, some veteran players, the alumnus are here and so I want to give them a shout out as well, but our main purpose and focus here is not to be overlooked when tennis, and it's not just about the Cougar Tennis Program, it's about the lifetime sport and the fitness and activities. If you're not familiar with research, tennis is the number-one fitness sport in the nation and just recently surged from twenty-five to thirty-five percent in participants and many of your individuals, I just strongly encourage you to get our, we are strong in the community history. I'm not saying, you know, the tennis doesn't want to dominate a tennis facility or any, that's not our nature and that's not our purpose, but it is to make sure that we are looked at as a tennis community, Grayson County and your city of Litchfield as well, that we get recognized in this potential upcoming sports complex and not be overlooked. Of the nature and the potential of, let's expose kids to some other things. Of course, we have it here, we're just not the football and the basketball arena that most spectators want to see their child and some sit on the bench, for instance, but I have some, I think some players that are willing to come up and I don't ever frown upon, it's a great experience to be here and they also, in a couple of years and some presently taking speech 101 and for college credit, so another opportunity for them to be in front of people and be exposed to the nature of that teaching as well.
We do want to, I do want to take an opportunity to welcome everyone, I neglected to do that earlier, and I will say this, I'll echo Sherri, what she said, I do enjoy seeing the young people here.
Yes.
And learning to participate and petition and things like that for things with the government that you want because we are here solely to serve the citizens of this community. That's our, that's our only purpose here. So, I do want to welcome you guys and anyone that wants to take time to address the council, except Jim Gorgi. But we do welcome your input and I think, I think, I don't think you will be overlooked. I think, I think it's something that's, and it's a process we have to go through. We had our first reading last Friday and I think there's, we've got a long way to go, but we're trying to get started and the letters that Sherri mentioned, I passed those on to Denny and Brittany to look at those, but we can get copies of those for each of them if you like.
I've got copies.
Yes, I think we got them, we got them.
I did not get any letters.
Okay.
Did you?
I'll get you copies.
Did you get letters?
Is there anybody else on the council?
Did email them or send them to me?
They were paper.
I brought them all over too, we could do.
Yeah.
No, I haven't, we received them.
Okay. And we'll, we'll get those, I gave them to look through before meeting next Friday, or last Friday, so we can get those back and get a copy for each one.
I thought they was in my email.
No.
Okay, Jim?
Thanks for having me here. Sherri mentioned this to me last week and always been a big fan of Sherri and what she does with the Grayson County tennis programs and also wanted to compliment the five-star cup over there. Appreciate that.
He travels before, that's why we got him.
That's all right with me.
Is, is this a free one now? Is that a free one now since I've been complimenting?
If you see me, I'll buy you a free one, or two, or three. But anyway, just kind of to reiterate what Sherri said, tennis is a lifelong sport, you know, as you get older, and I can attest to it, that it's a little more difficult for me to play basketball and some of the other sports, but you can get out and play tennis. In the summers, you'll see Arnold Hack and several people playing at the tennis courts and I'm sure they would like to play some in the winter if there were courts available. You know, tennis has grown twenty-seven percent in, just in the last several years. Pickleball's coming on, great job to all the pickleball courts have been built here, they're wore out, you can hardly get on one, but that's a good thing. You know, I used to talk about some of the things that, from my perspective as a parent, I had a basketball kid and I had a tennis kid and I had softball kids, and cross-country kids, and track and field kids, and I had a music kid. And, you know, the music programs here have a lot going for it and, you know, my son Dawson benefited from that a lot, he's at U of L now. My daughter Kylie benefited greatly from the basketball programs here and the softball programs and she even did tennis her senior year. But, you know, Grace benefited from the tennis programs and so as a parent, you know, Kylie, I never had problems finding a softball field to practice on with teams. Billy helped me one, he helped me a couple of years, he can remember, you could always find a softball field. Never had problems finding a basketball gym for AAU when I coached Kylie in that and Grace, or for junior pro. I was able to work well with the various principals at the different schools as long as, you know, follow the protocol and listen to what they say, they were, they were very accommodating to work with you, so, you know, we always, and then there's a lot of churches that'll work with you on basketball gyms, so there's a lot of opportunity for kids to play year-round in basketball, whether it's snowing, raining, whatever. Tennis was a little different, you know, so Grace got into it in sixth grade and I knew nothing about tennis, which is probably why she liked it, but, you know, we started planning some tournaments to help her try to get better for high school in a Central Kentucky tennis series, which Sherri had told us about. We started taking her to lessons in E-Town. Over the years, that evolved to lessons in Louisville, lessons in Owensboro, tournaments all over Kentucky, Tennessee, Arkansas, Alabama. It was a, you can put as much into it as you want and so, but you had to if you wanted to be competitive and, you know, Grace wanted to be competitive. So, being a rural county, you know, if you go to the high school state tournament, you look at the final four in girls or boys tennis, it's going to be kids from Louisville, Lexington, you might sneak one in from Owensboro every once in a while, but they have so many resources in tennis. I was fortunate enough and blessed enough to be able to take Grace to a lot of these things and get these lessons and then, you know, for a rural county, to have a coach like Sherri Vincent is against the norm. We're very blessed to have her over these years to be here pushing for these type things for the kids and they grow to appreciate it as they get older. But, you know, one of the things, you know, from Grace being able to travel and doing all that, she was able to win four regional championships. She went to college, she was a, played all four years of college, was an All-American in the National Christian Athletic Association her senior year, but she couldn't have done it if I hadn't taken her to all those places. So, you know, the winter training and so forth, that helps and, you know, we have two resources, we have Sherri as a great resource and recently, we have some new neighbors down at Nolan Lake, Larry Klein and his wife, that Sherri works well with, they give lessons right here. You know, if I was here now, I wouldn't have to drive and pay the gas money, the food bill, and then, you know, all I gotta do is pay the cost of the lesson. You know, and Sherri's done a lot bringing in college kids from Campbellsville or different places to give lessons, she's, she's worked her tail off of that. So, you know, we, the thing about tennis, a kid's going to get out of it what they put into it. Basketball, you know, when you get to high school, it's five spots basically, maybe three if you count playing up an eight-man rotation. Tennis, you don't even have to play high school tennis to be involved in AAU and so forth, but, you know, it, it has a lot of potential too and you can play summer tournaments and get all the exposure and practice and play you want. You can't complain, I'm not getting any playing, you can't complain that I don't get any playing time because there are tournaments every weekend all over Kentucky. But, you know, preparing for those tournaments and being ready to compete, it's a year-round thing and that's where, you know, I think Sherri, she's, she's not as greedy as I would be, she's talking one tennis court, so I'd want to get two tennis courts. You know, I hope that would be considered, you know, I know doctors, a lot of them play tennis, I'd even advocate for a pool. I swim up at E-Town, you know, two, three days a week now, but I'm driving there to do it, paying that fee there, so, you know, you might be surprised on, on people that would do that, but the tennis, I could definitely see benefit. I will say that when you look at the banners in the high school gym, count the regional championships, nobody's got more than tennis. So, she's got a lot out of, a lot less resources than what Owensboro and other, and Bowling Green and some of these other towns have, so, you know, just, I would ask that you consider, I know that there's a lot of people, there's another committee and, but, you know, if you get a chance to put a bug in their ear or anything to help with the tennis program, I think that would be good and, you know, you can paint pickleball there so it could help have some indoor, I don't, those things would stay booked up, I have no doubt, so. Anyway, I probably went long-winded there, but anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, well, didn't realize she was going to fall asleep on me, but my name is Angie Durbin Ogle, I'm here on behalf of my daughter who has started the summer tennis camps and she asks me every day, when's the next tennis camp going to be, Mom, but we can't do it until summer and so I'm here on behalf of my daughter and of course, I've played all through high school and I'm still forty years old and I'm on a league right now and I'm loving it, but I would love to continue to do that other than just in the summer.
Thank you.
I'll remember you when you play. You're pretty good?
Yeah. Thank you.
She's still pretty.
My name is Piper Mangan and I am a player on the team currently, I've been playing for three years, going on four now, and before I started tennis with the team, I'd never even picked up a tennis racket, I didn't know how to hit a ball, I didn't know anything and now I've been playing, and this summer especially, I've gotten to have more opportunities thanks to Coach Vincent, she's provided so many amazing opportunities for us with having the Kleins, as they mentioned before, come in and they teach us lessons here at our courts, but as it gets colder and the weather gets worse, we're not able to continue growing in our tennis as we'd like to because with tennis, it's a sport that you have to continue playing to get better. There's something that Coach Klein has taught me is that you never stay at the same spot, you're either getting better or you're getting worse, so if you're not practicing, then you're not going to get better and you're not, we're not going to get where we want to be unless, as he mentioned before, we're going, traveling to other places to go to indoor tennis facilities because when the weather gets worse, you can, it's, you can't play tennis on an outdoor court because rain will go and the courts will get slick and it poses injuries, risks and you can, also it'll ruin your equipment and tennis equipment is expensive, it's not the cheapest, but tennis isn't just a sport, it's a community. It's a community of love and friendship, it's a community of like-minded individuals and we want to continue to grow that community with kids like Nora and even our alumni because we, we go out and we have hits with them every Tuesday night right now and it's just great to get to know everybody and it's set up a lot of friendships that I never thought I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Carter Bernard, I'm a sophomore on the team right now, I've been playing six, since my sixth grade year, five years now. Tennis, like Piper said, you can't play it in the winter because the courts are usually too slick or there's just rain or it's just too cold and windy where the ball just will fly anywhere and also driving to Louisville, it's three hours round trip and like you can't, and the courts just getting playing time up there, it's not cheap and you just can't play, that does, it's like two hours round trip just at Owensboro to play and there's not guarantee that you'll even get a court on whenever you go, but, and then the lessons, like going to Louisville, they're not, they're not cheap, like they can get up to close to a hundred dollars, I think, and then like the gear, it can also just get ruined, like balls, if they get wet, then they'll just lose all their bounce and you just can't play with them anymore.
Thank you.
I got a question though. Carter, Carter, I got a, Carter, I got a question for you, you can answer from there. How tall are you? I'm just curious, how did this happen? I know your grandparents on one side. Curious. I'm five foot five. And I, I just want everybody to know in this room that I was five foot when I graduated from high school, so you can imagine growing five inches in college and still just being five foot five.
The rest of it was hair at the time, he had, he teased it a lot. And I'll, before this young man gets started, I will tell you guys, part of the conversation we had when we went with Coach Vincent and some of those last week, these guys practice in the hallways at the school when, when it's inclement weather, so, and that, I'm sure that poses a, it makes for not a very good situation, so.
That's a problem, yeah.
All right, young man.
My name is Roger Pierce, I've been playing on the Grayson County tennis team for about two years now and my dad takes me to Owensboro every weekend, so I have a place to play indoors. I just think it would be a great opportunity for everybody to play indoors here, right where we live and it'd be a lot easier for everybody. My goal is to play college tennis, it's, it'd be hard to make that happen if you don't have somewhere to play all the time. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Neely Hornbeck and I'm a sophomore, I've been playing ever since sixth grade. I just wanted to say, and when you look around the room, it's not only the high school team that's here representing, but it's also like Angie and Nora, she played, and so you got to think like whenever we grow up, we're going to have kids and they're going to play tennis, so it's not, it's not just us who's going to use it. And like other people have mentioned, the alumni, we come out every Tuesday night and we have a lot of fun, so it's not, it's not just us that would use it, it's the whole community who would get a lot of use out of it, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey Sherri, I've got a question for you, and you, you're not going to be looked over by no means, number one, but have you ever advocated to the school board? I mean, I mean, you've got a huge stance here and a huge following and a lot of influential people, have you ever showed up to a school board meeting like this?
Not, we have approached over the years of getting better facilities and even above it, if you will, just, but, no, that's not, we kind of get moved down the line some, but thank you for noticing and yeah, we try to utilize as much as board opportunities as we can. In our budget, that's what I expend on is travels to buy the board for these other facilities. I'm not for sure that, you know, it's just never been on top of the plate, we're not another revenue program, as some people would say, and you have to campaign and advocate for what you want and need, but it's a good question and I approached several council members and recently said, said in on a meeting and I was approached, what can we bring? I, I know what the tennis team as far as their revenue could bring, plus personal and contributions, but we can also keep that place busy with the Nora clinics, for example, you go, for example, the alumni, men and women's double, there's a lot there, I just don't want you to think that it's just for the tennis team, we just happen to be in the forefront and a strong foundation, of course, because I've been there so long, but yeah, that's, that's a great question and a fair question. I can't ask, I know we have gone before, the pose and the lights that you see there, basically everything out there over my years, even the concession stand, we've raised money for.
Well, you got the football team that's got an extra building, you got the baseball team that's got an extra field, you got, I mean, and you're hanging more banners on the, or in the gym than anybody.
Think about that.
Exactly.
What we've done, it's not just these, these kids, we've been a foundation of some really good kids, but they buy in. I can't say enough about the program.
Thank you.
Just what she said, I think it'd be surprising, adult tennis leagues, you have them in Owensboro, E-Town, Lexington, Louisville, and they get, I mean, a lot of people play tennis all the time and we, we ran them outdoor a few times in the summer, but in the winter, you know, people try to get exercise, it's a great form of exercise and they have, you know, they have team tennis for different age groups all the way up to city. It's, you know, it's a pretty big community within the state and, you know, there's such a, it's a pretty good foundation here that, that's an area that can differentiate Litchfield and Grayson County from surrounding counties.
Scheduling, scheduling is going to be the nail game.
Yeah.
Because you got you, you got baseball, you got basketball, you got pickleball, you got, so scheduling's going to be, you got seven days in a week.
You have peak season versus repeat time of the day and that's where I want to ensure this committee, but the Abbot Committee, you can have mommy and me clinics, we can keep it busy at the mornings and then after, you know, there's many opportunities and I offered to bring in USTA Kentucky people to, and there's some recreation-type programs that's grants that they'll pay by, or you have to just have tennis in your facility. So, there's opportunities there, I just wish that maybe I was seeked out earlier and maybe there's opportunities there. Please don't misunderstand that this is just about the Grayson County High School tennis program. Don't do that. As long as I'm here, we have a young man that was finished number eight in the state that's teaching lessons in the Bowling Green facility, he would love to be back here. You know, he's taking classes, he'll be a tennis pro instructor. We've got people like that all around, we, I assure you, I will get the people here.
If you asked about the school board, I coach cross-country or I, I'm an assistant under Coach Miller and I can promise you, there's a wish list of what you want for sports and I guarantee you, she has put down the building and as a sport, we put down for a building, for just a building to hold some of our resources that we use for races and we still are, yet I've been coaching for six years and we've never received a building.
You would think that would happen.
But, and so it's not mounting the other sports, I'm not that mounting because they are, I'm thankful that they're doing well, but I can promise you, tennis and cross-country are bigger than any other sport and you just get overlooked, so.
I've always been told we're non-revenue sports.
You're what? Non-revenue sport.
Non-revenue.
Somebody made a lot of revenue off me.
Me too, Jimmy.
Well, and, and the truth when we boil it down is too, you guys are part of the community and that's what we want to do with this, this building is to structure it. Exactly. We want them to come back and I may need one of them to push me around in a wheelchair someday when I get old, but, but we do aim to serve the people in the community, that's, that's our number-one goal and I don't look, I don't look at you guys as a, as a tennis entity, I look at you more as a community entity and, and, you know, those are the things that, that we have to keep in, in the back of our minds when we're making decisions and things, so. Anyone else that wants to, wants to speak?
I'm not sure, look, I don't have no idea, I'm sure they're all up there, but like the, the reason that we all want our kids to play, this is my, what, fourteen years of parents somehow, like your mom had had, and because all three of the kids have played and I played for Coach, I think she was my student teacher, she would have said, you can do a missing, I would have signed up, she was just that person and she runs that program and then she's trained all these kids for the past however many years and our kids have become people who want their kids to run programs just like theirs. They pray together, they work together, they do community service together and they, they community members that we want in our community, whether it's our kids or all these other kids that, because it's not just this one thing, I mean, why would we not want that year-round for our community, it's, it's unbelievable. Our kids have played every sport, this is the only sport that has made them a better Our kids have played every sport, but this is the only sport that has made them a better person and ready to be a leader in our community sometimes.
Believe me, there's no more group that wants to keep your kids here than this seven right here.
Exactly.
Because somebody in this crowd is going to be right here behind this desk one of these days. And, and I'm hoping that it's some of your kids that, that stay here. We're trying to do things to offer to keep kids here, to keep people here. We need to work a little bit on jobs. We got manufacturing, we, we have hospital, we have school boards, we have, uh, we've got places that people can come and enjoy life and, and stay here and, and be in this community. But you gotta put your heart in community. We can't do it by ourselves. And I appreciate all of you coming out and, and expressing your love for your sport.
Please take the time to read the kids' letters. It's their voice. It wasn't orchestrated by me or, um, read the, read the letters.
The highest praise anyone will get is what she just said about you, Sherri, so I'll just, I'll reiterate that. That's, that's as good as it gets, isn't it?
It's a good feeling, but that's why I'm still here. It's about the relationships and network.
I agree. Anyone else?
I don't have much to add. I just want to say that I'm a number outside of the tennis team. But you all bring a lot from the tennis game playing. Uh, the schools would not provide me a tennis program. However, Coach has not been back into playing, which I'm glad to know. My best friend, we played doubles together since we played tennis since we graduated. I got away from it, but it's like being back home at the court, so sorry for the tears. If this didn't show you what the program, no, 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 we don't. But to have, of course, for the community, that I can take my kids to your grounds and play with them. Cause, uh, my daughter is in this camp with Nora and my son's in a group of, uh, for the eight year olds. But, um, I just want to say it's not just the tennis games here.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone feel free to come up and, and speak.
This is Chris McWilliams. This is my son Max. And, uh, he started playing last year and I've never seen him as enthusiastic of anything he's ever done. And it makes me so proud. And he's done so, so much improvement. And if we had an indoor facility, he wouldn't have to stop, you know, and start over again. He would be able to continue the progress and he made, he's made a lot. And I'm sixty-five and he's gotten me back into tennis and marine cardiovascular and I just, I can't wait to do it every day if I could. But the thing is, if we had an indoor facility, it would be like something that would go to a lot. Because there's really nothing to do that physical in the cold weather. And we had an indoor one, I'm sure it would be a good one to a great degree. It's worth the investment.
Can you beat him in tennis yet? Thank you, thank you. Anyone else?
All right, guys.
Before, Mayor, if I could, before you guys leave, I just want to update you all what the situation is. Uh, the Recreation Center Committee met, I guess Friday with the group. I'm a non-voting member, so I'm just, I'm just a gopher, so try to get information. But the committee voted to request a feasibility study on the Rec Center and also a pro forma study. So what that means is somebody that does this for a living is going to do some investigation to see what they think would be go over in our community. Pool, soccer, basketball, volleyball, tennis, uh, pickleball. But anyway, they're going to provide a study. Uh, we'll have to fund it, so we'll talk about that. But I think we'll talk about that later without you guys. But, uh, what that means is you guys might be coming back all the time. So when you get the results of the feasibility study, uh, the committee will look at it and see what the so-called experts recommend. Then you may have to be back and say, let me tell you, this is what they've recommended. So just be prepared to come here a lot, which is great for us, cause we need more people to come here.
Yes.
Um, but, and honestly, nobody's reached out, Sherri, nobody's really reached out to anybody. We have, nobody's had any contact with any other sport at all. This is just step one. The other bad news for you guys that are a little bit older, this is going to be a long process. Uh, I don't see this, some of you guys that are seniors and juniors. It'll be probably after you guys are hopefully in college or whatever. But anyway, just give you all a heads up, but just be prepared to come back and do this a lot.
He's full of good news tonight, isn't he?
Hey, Denny, I have a question for you. Uh, are we, we're going to get an outside firm for a feasibility study, is that correct?
Right.
And based on the socioeconomic status and the demographics of Grayson County, that's probably not going to go in our, in our favor very much, is it?
Go in our favor? What do you mean?
As far as, as far as even being favorable for a rec center.
Yeah, well, yes, I think the feasibility study would be more like what sports they think would be go over and also how much money can be generated. But, I mean, it doesn't matter if, if we've got the money, we're going to have it regardless of what they say.
But would it not also make sense to get more, uh, community input from the, from our community members who would actually be utilizing the facility to find out which sports, what they would actually like to see in it? I mean, obviously basketball, pickleball, we have a strong tennis community. Um, but this is just a small portion of Grayson County.
That fees, that person come in and talk to people in the community and happy to suggest that's what.
Was that a community survey would be helpful.
Yeah, I think that, I think, I think that we could. I think we should probably do both. Cause we don't have, um, the best record of, of bringing people in. Whenever we get a speaker to come in, if it's going to be somebody from, that's going to be conducting the feasibility study. Uh, I mean, we can announce it, we can promote it, but how many are going to show up? So could we not do both? Have a community electronic, uh, an electronic community survey as well as an individual or a corporation or whoever it is that's going to be doing the feasibility study. And then the rec committee, uh, would have two pieces of data to go off of instead of just the one.
I don't know. Well, I'll run by the committee, see what they recommend.
See, but I think.
It would be a concern of ours as well, is that as strong as we are here in the foundation, is how, how are you collecting data? We would like, we would need a survey to be able to get included, even to have a voice. Uh, but I, I have, since we talked about it, I have had fear of that. There wouldn't be enough representation, if you will, of, of the community representation or even awareness of what, you, you would have to explain feasibility to these guys. I, I'm not going to be able to, but I know it's a, it's a data research. But if we're based on socioeconomic and all of that, if, you know, tennis is considered more of a fluke. But these guys could tell you how much I can do. A kid doesn't get something unless, if we all can do it and it's, we don't have our flunkers, educators. And that's the way it's been. We've lost many of doctors because they don't, being able to stay, cause they don't want to try it anymore. So I would like to know a little bit more about a feasibility test and how that might include or exclude us. Because if that's going to put us on the bottom, then, you know, we, we want to go another route.
I don't think it, I don't think it'll put you on the bottom. Just, just pulled up here on, on the web, feasibility study basically helps you focus on various aspects of the proposal before choosing a plan of action. So any feasibility study, to me, would have to include someone that comes in and speaks with members of the community.
Yes.
Whether through open meetings, electronically, whatever. I don't think we, we aim to have anybody to come in and say, well, everybody plays basketball and there's a lot of football players and all that. We're not looking for that type of study. We're, we're looking for a study that will give us a true picture of what, what we can do and what's, even at that, that feasibility study may just give us options, a snapshot, yeah, options to look at. We're, we're not, I don't think, Denny, correct me if you're thinking differently. A feasibility study, uh, doesn't necessarily mean that, that whatever they say, we have to abide by.
We're, we're the ones paying for it.
Yeah, this is just a.
They could say, we don't want basketball. Or the feasibility could say, well, basketball is not, not worth doing. It, it, you shouldn't do it. But that doesn't mean that, you know, we're not going to have basketball, same with tennis.
What I do have concerns about is that they're, they're going to say, oh, tennis wouldn't make it here. You don't have enough, uh, because of looking at our demographics, uh, um, from our socioeconomic status.
We're here to provide recreation for the community. We make no money off any recreation we do. Okay? Nothing, nothing, nothing in our city, nothing that we put on recreational wise makes a dime.
And, and they may come back and say, you guys need a pool. Now, again, from research that we've done and been around, a pool is extremely expensive to build, but extremely expensive to maintain. So, you know, but again, they may say we need a pool, so hey, if we got the money to do it. I mean, if we got the money, why not do everything you can possibly do? But you gotta pay for it at the end of the day.
Well, the feasibility look at the, the health statistics and what's on Medicaid and Medicare.
They should get a whole, whole picture of, of the community and, and, um, obviously we've not talked to anybody yet. Just what I know, I read online about feasibility. Right, and we want to get a whole picture. Like, and, and again, that's not saying that we're going to take everything that that feasibility study says is sensible for us to do here and say, well, this is all we can do. That's not the point. The point is, is to, to get a start and see what, what, what it looks like from an outside perspective. And, and this feasibility thing, I think will be pretty much a, from a financial perspective is what it'll end up looking like. Which we already know that that's going to be, it's going to cost a lot of money.
Can I go back to, just wanted to draw from a previous statement you said, we'll call people in. You know, um, my experience has been here in the community and, um, not political, but, uh, there's a lot of people in this community that can bring many positive contributions, but never get to sit there around them.
Yeah.
Just saying, and you've got people in here that graduates, uh, have their own businesses and they don't get a voice because it's the same political people. Just saying, I would like to be, make sure that this feasibility study, that, that they're reaching, if they're investigating or researching or interviewing, that it's well-rounded, that it's not you all picking.
Yeah, we're not looking for somebody to, to put the blame on. That's not what the feasibility study is about. We're not putting, we're not looking for a scapegoat. We're just looking for information. And that's, and, and I think that's where we have to start with all the information we can. Then we'll have to make a decision at some point, what can we do and what we can't do. And, uh, we don't by any means intend to leave anyone out. I can speak for myself only. I'm open to things that benefit this, this community and the people that live here. That's, that's what I'm open to. And if it be tennis, if it be, you know, there's been some talk of indoor soccer, things like that. I don't have a bias toward any of those things. I'm like Jim Gorbey, I'm getting older. So I'm limited to all the things that I can participate in, just a few months.
The feasibility is not handpicked.
No, no.
That the people who come in and get interviewed are handpicked or we, sometimes the word is used nominated and it's then handpicked.
Yeah, no, I don't think that's the intent at all. I, I don't, I, I don't plan on participating in anything like that. I think it's.
Council do that or is it that advisory committee?
We will, the advisory committee will probably contact, I, I got online and looked, there's, you know, feasibility study people everywhere. They'll have to make a decision at some point who to use. And at some point, we'll have a discussion about how to finance that. And I think, I think we'll see some other government entities that are going to go in with us on that and try to cover the cost of that.
Have to have. We can't do it by ourselves, not the city.
This is all new to us too.
Yes.
I mean, this is the first time we've been around on this. Luckily, we had somebody on the board member that was on the, uh, as far as the Aquatic Center and they just sent a request for a proposal. And once they got that, they realized they needed a feasibility study because they didn't know what would work and what wouldn't. So they went back to square one. And that's typically the feasibility study is the first thing that's done. And in theory, I think the ideal is maybe get three or four different companies that this is what they do. And then interview them and ask for bids from them and then make a selection, uh, from, from that. But, and we've been in contact with, you know, other areas, uh, parks and rec people that, that have utilized feasibility studies and kind of learning as we go on some of it, so.
And I will tell you this, you guys show up.
Exactly.
You show up and that's what, that's sometimes that's what it takes, is to show up and show interest. Uh, because anybody, you could ask any layman on the street, uh, think, they think of a sportsplex. They're going to think of the basketballs and the pickleball, things like that. But we, we have no intention of leaving anybody out. We really don't. If I thought, if I thought that was the, uh, that was the plan or whatever, I, I, I don't, I don't think I'd, I'd want to go through the things that we'll need to go through to get this done. Cause it's, it's going to take, you know, it's, it's going to take some, some time for whoever the next generation of council persons are, you know, and mayor. But our, our goal, my goal is to get, get things moving in that direction and get a good base. And we've started with the property. I think it's a perfect piece of property where we're looking at, over across from the Aquatic Center. And, uh, but I guess what I'm saying is you guys continue to be, to be the vocal voice for your tennis program. And whoever does the feasibility study, we will, we will definitely get in touch with people. They, they're not, I don't want somebody just to come into town and look around and, and hit the high points. That's, that's not, that's not what our intention is.
And now we're good in our sales. Uh, we're, it's a multi-purpose facility that the, our sales Woodford County partnered on. They have theater, we couldn't watch the Christmas play there last year. They have walking track up, walking track low, some basketball courts, they have an indoor pool, they have pickleball side. They have like a somewhat, like a smaller version of our aquatic center outside. They charge, the way they do the economics of it is kind of interesting. Uh, they charge a monthly fee, just like you have a gym membership.
Right.
So you have, you know, you have to reserve time or whatever, have a weight room, treadmills.
Same way here.
Reserve time for it, obviously, the tread, you know, the treadmill stuff, the weight rooms, and even the walking tracks are open pretty much. But, uh, they, they might be somebody to talk to, see how that's working.
How they pay for it? That's the number one, that's the number one, yeah, yeah. Look at your standard, look at your profit tax.
But you might just get some ideas, you know, if you don't do a pool, so you had two tennis courts in place of that, then you can do it. I mean, the tennis building and so forth, not going to cost you much with the pool, I don't think. Courts and so forth, but, uh, but they, they, I mean, it's a constant revenue stream. Whether it comes to the cost of it or not, I don't know, but they might be somebody to reach out to and just talk to.
Okay, yeah.
We've kind of done a little bit of that. I think we've been to about ten different facilities like that across the state and it's.
Yeah.
But it's a pretty nice facility.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, the taxes are pretty rough.
Hopkinsville's been the only one that's really been close to paying for itself.
We all have great ideas when it comes to how, how you going to pay for it. We're going to provide everything we can.
But it's, it just might be, you know, you know, you're trying to figure the feasibility economics, you know, sustaining it.
Right. And, you know, I think there, I think personally, I think there may come a time, uh, pool has been mentioned a lot. I think in just the normal, um, timeframe, you know, I look back to when, when I was in high school. You pretty much had a football program, a baseball program and a basketball program and a girls' basketball program. That was pretty much it. But as things evolve, uh, I see communities around us getting swim teams and dive teams and things like that.
Yeah, it might be a partnership with the board of education.
Might be, and it, and that may be something that's ten years down the road. But we want to make sure that we, that we're on the right path when we start.
But you got a tennis team and like I say, I'm, I was thinking that location, how they do that. You can, where their pool is, you can fit two tennis courts and meet a lot of needs.
Yeah.
Just an indoor walking track, I think. I mean, kudos to y'all, what you've done with the city park, the fire, the fire truck park and the pickleball and all the stuff on East Main going on every other weekend. A lot of good things, that's the law to that yard. You see a lot of progress.
Yeah, and that's, and that's what we want. That's what, that's, that's why we do those things is for the community. And, uh, like I say, you guys, you guys show up strong and that's a good thing. I wish there was as many people at all our council meetings.
Yes.
So a lot of times we don't know what people want, then we do the wrong thing, so.
Well, you ask people to come and they just, oh, well, you know, I'll let somebody else get involved and let them do it. And we need people like you all here all the time. I beg people to come. They'll, they'll have things that they want done and we'll say, we'll see what we can do, but come to the meeting and tell all seven of us, you know.
And you're young people, I do appreciate you being here. I really do. I hope, I hope one of these days I live long enough to come in here and see about half the people sitting up here that were at the tennis meeting back in the day, so.
On the facilities that you all have visited, have you visited places that have indoor tennis courts?
The only one I've seen is one at Center College. Now, I haven't been there. I've seen pictures and talked to Bryce about how it worked. And it's a multi-purpose. It was not a standalone.
I, you haven't been to Owensboro, you have to be came as far as.
Yes, yes, I'll take that back. I have been.
No, Owensboro?
I have not been to Owensboro.
Been to Middleburg County, Madisonville, am I right? Bowling Green.
Hopkinsville, Tennessee, Summit County, Tennessee, Neat County, Ohio County. Seems like I'm missing out a couple more, but.
Anyone else? Okay, well, we do appreciate you guys coming and, uh.
My name is Tracy. And I've written some comments on the stuff that I'm trying to do with the issue. I've read some comments on the stuff that the council has heard about this issue. I knew this, the little white light, it's white, basketball, and it's funny, and it's fun. And I can't believe that I can't say this is the first time that everyone came and said, I'm going to UK, I'm going to get a scholarship. This is what he wants. I think that's right. People in our city, it's a hand, and this tennis team, these kids, and they interact with each other. They are positive, they're all always very scary. They're cute, and they help each other. They say good things, I said thank you. And listen, you're not sitting here on your shoulders alone. And one of these times, we're very sweet because people don't, we don't, don't give up things that are negative. And if they comment on how well I, that I'm tennising, so. So I can't say any of the positive things about this program. I think it's absolutely wonderful. And when I see it, even for all of these kids, it's something that I'm not saying, or I encourage you all to keep that in mind, as really are doing this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, guys. Well, we're going to continue on with the rest of the meeting, if you're welcome to stay, or you're welcome not to.
Thank you guys.
Most people don't want to sit through the, the mundane parts.
I was wondering if you're feeling?
Yes, ma'am.
I will say something because I have saw through the year, Sherry was in high school, and Mr. McKinnney hired someone, I had, Tom and I had lived in Hopkinsville the summer before, and I saw what a wonderful indoor Olympic pool was. But I came home and I thought, we need a swimming pool and we need somebody to teach kids to play tennis. So I, you were talking about persistent. I was at the city council with Bill McCutcheon because we had the opportunity to go through BOR and they paid for half of the BOSTU that pool. And I am so grateful this day for all the people that say to me, my child learned to swim when that's what they were so happy.
Yeah.
Also, Mr. McKinnney told me, if I could get 10 people to play tennis, he would give them a teacher. They would pay, the city would pay for a teacher. I bought 10, I even had to make grants, which Billie could testify to this. He had to come and be one of the 10 so we could have some tennis too. And they paid for that. And it went on, I, I don't remember, I remember Wondery Cubby, which some-
I remember Cubby, yeah.
But we even had tennis courts, you know, and I played with them, you put them in the net. I was quick and I could get the ball right over. But we have to think of what we attract as a community to get doctors in here, people that we want to be brought into this community that will also help it grow.
Right, exactly right.
I think that's important, we don't need to miss.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
I can remember Sherry was in high school at this time, and she had a brush, she would call and try.
Sherry, Sherry, do you, do you? Sherry, do you want to speak to that?
But that's what I would act.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Julie.
And I've, I've always heard Steve Baird say something I'll, I'll remember, I've heard him say it for years and years, when he was at the hospital, he didn't have to recruit doctors, he had to recruit their wives and their families. And that's, that's the kind of thing we're trying to do, so.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Glasscock.
I believe we can do it. This girl deserves it.
That big seven training pays off, paid off, hasn't it?
I just want to say thank you guys for being welcoming to us and for not letting the voices fall on deaf ears. I've been to other board meetings where the people behind the microphones don't respond.
Yeah.
And it's so nice to be able to come and have questions answered, to get information, and to feel like we're leaving here knowing something, you know?
Right.
Knowing that work is being done to figure out what to do.
Right.
I know you don't have a plan.
Yeah.
But it's just nice to be able to feel like we're received. So I just want to say thank you there.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that.
Appreciate it.
I just want to say one other thing.
Okay.
Encourage your kids to set their goals. Quentin told me he was going to UK. I told him, you have to work. Melanie told me in the third grade that she was going to be the feature pro at UK. And all the coaches told me that in front, said, nobody is ever a feature pro but Ohio State girls, that's the only one. Now Jimmy, Jimmy Gorbey talked about traveling. I traveled every weekend to take Melanie to night school for lessons. She, the school was so gracious, they let her use that gym to practice every day, and that's what it does. And that floor was so hot, we had to go to the gym at 8:00.
Yeah.
Then we'd go back at 9:00. But she won. She went for five years to be a pro.
Yeah.
And it can be dope, but these parents have to take them so hard.
Right.
Some kids are not that fortunate. And Danny Joe got mad at me for a year he would talk to me over the pool because he said, we have hours left. I said, Danny Joe, not all parents can take their kids to hours left. And not all kids are fortunate enough like Gorbey to take kids. And I took Mel.
Yeah.
But let's provide it here where the ones that can't get to Owensboro, to other places, let's provide it for those children.
Right.
I'll show them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I know we're all tired, I'm just going to say, Lisa, thank you so much, but, um, I want to get emotional.
What's, what's your name first? What's your name?
My name is Emily Beck. And I teach kindergarten and I've had foot surgery and I really just like to be home with my foot up, but I came up here this late. And that's it. We will, we will support her because she rocks and it's starting to kill my nerves when you leave her in a fall off. Can you see more of us?
Well, she's, Sherry's about my age, so she's got to stay around a while. She's got, she's got a while left, yeah.
Tell him, Sherry, you're not either.
Well.
No, we're not.
You're close. In breathing distance. All right, guys, anyone else? Thanks again for coming out. And feel free, feel free to come back anytime.
Yes.
Whether it's got to do with tennis or, or anything, if you've got a concern, we want to know about it. Okay? Thank you all.
We appreciate it.
Thank you guys.
All right, guys, we'll move on. Next item on the agenda is award the FEMA PA Grant Management Contract to EUDS. This is a professional consulting service for when we have FEMA claims. We met with them a couple of times, had Tyler, we sit down with them and talk to them. It's basically, when there's a big FEMA claim, when there's any FEMA claim, this group will come in and help us file the paperwork and everything. And FEMA's a, a bear when it goes to paperwork. They will, there, there are some things built within the FEMA system that when they bill, it will pay part of their services too. So we're not really out anything, and we don't, we don't owe anything until we use it. There's no charge until we actually use it, so. Basically, just need an okay that, that, to, to go ahead and, and work with those people.
Okay.
All right. I need a motion. Can I have a second okay?
Second okay.
All right. Motion by Billy, second by Clayton, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry, was the second Clayton or Gina?
Clayton.
Clayton, okay. I heard Gina's voice that he said, I'm sorry.
She was closer.
I'll entertain a motion at this time to go into executive session.
I made the motion.
Second.
Second by Toody. All in favor?
And that pursuant to KRS 61.810-1C, update on the handover of the patient.
Okay.[1247.52] Good. I will entertain a motion now to come back into regular session.
I make a motion, we come back into regular session.
Motion by Clayton.
I'll second it.
Second by Tootie, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Erlene, do you want to give a?
Just went through a detailed account on the pending litigation the city's facing at this time. There's no need for any action to be taken or any votes to be taken at this time.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on down to unfinished business. Recommendation for the second alternate for code enforcement board. If you guys know of anyone that may be interested in participating in that.
I gave you a name last time.
Okay. Let them know to contact us at City Hall here, and if they're interested, so.
Well, he has, I think he came in, filled out a resume and everything.
Okay.
And Gay knows, Gay knows him, and she agrees he's a good.
Okay. We received an email, we've talked about this some, we did not receive the grant, we applied for reference to new fire truck. And to keep in mind, we'll need to start looking at financing options soon. All right, unfinished business, Billy.
Yes, sir.
Terry.
I've got one thing that we discussed briefly a few weeks ago, maybe a few months ago, and it was about the handicap parking around the square. Really hadn't given it much more thought until I was coming around the square around lunchtime one day last week, and, I mean, parking was full, which was a good problem to have with the restaurant and the stores and everything. However, there was a van that was, just had the very front
So we could, we could go ahead and work that direction and get that done if we need to. Because really, all it's going to amount to is, is striding. Yeah, so.
I never really thought about, I mean, we discussed it, but I didn't think about the hardship in it until I actually saw it happening with my own eyes.
This is a problem, and all over in front of the Title II regret, did you notice where we put a ramp there?
I did.
Because that, that is impossible for people in a wheelchair to get across that, that ditch. And when we do the, the renovation up there as far as the drainage, that's going to change. And we're going to bring that all over to the edge of the sidewalk. So then again, a handicap parking spot will work there without a, without the bridge. That area will have more bridges.
Well, the ditch, the ditch is the deepest there around all the square.
Right, it is.
And elderly people couldn't, not only in a wheelchair, they couldn't make that step, so.
Elderly nothing, I couldn't do it.
And there was, there was an older gentleman that got hurt pretty bad there, trying to get around that before we put that there. So that was one of the reasons we, we wanted to do that. But we can, we can go ahead and work toward that, because like I say, we're going to have to restripe anyway when we put the new blacktop down. So we'll, we'll get working on that one, Scotty.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Tootie?
Yes, I got one thing, I talked about it a month or two ago, was the street light down there at the intersection of Wallace Avenue and the Vibe Pass? Street lights out, it, the people at Parkland Manor, they, they pinned on that a whole lot, because it lights their parking lot.
Okay.
Over there.
I'll get, I'll look and see if that's, that could be Warren, or it could be KU, that's real close in there?
Yeah.
Okay, Scotty's going to get a check on that, so we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it taken care of.
The other thing I asked about is that, is that property down there that's all growed up down through there, by the ditch line? I don't know who owns it, the city don't own it.
On the right side of Wallace going up?
No, no, it's across the road by Parkland Manor, between Parkland and.
Erickson's.
And Erickson's.
Erickson's.
Okay. Yeah, that is true, because I had to walk.
It's grown up real bad, and, and some of the people sitting out down there, they've got little dogs and stuff that they have to take out at nighttime. Well, they're scary, because they're hearing coyotes.
Yeah.
Around there. You know?
Yeah.
And they, they figure if it was cut down a little bit better, at least you could see something getting close to you.
Right. We'll, we'll look at that, I know that's, that's generally always stayed growed up, because I remember having to work the power line back there at one time, weed for chest high. That's been years ago.
There is an old cemetery back there.
Cemetery back there somewhere.
Yeah, poor, poor, what do they call it, poor house cemetery or something like that?
Yeah. I don't know, I think the right of way comes off of, to get to the cemetery, you just go off their. Parkland parking lot there.
Yeah, go back there.
Yeah.
The jail has done that in time. They cleaned it up back a few years ago when I was going to work with the county, when we did some work down there at the poorhouse.
Yeah.
And they had come in there and cleaned it up at one, and we might, might mention that to Billy.
Do they keep that mode now?
Nobody does.
The cemetery, I'm guessing the county does, that Kevin says they, they mowed about every cemetery in the county now.
Yeah, a hundred and a bunch.
Yeah. Yeah, I was thinking they did, because he told me one time too, that's until it filled up, I didn't realize. But there, there are people that pass, no family, no nothing, that's where they, they buried them at, so.
Big old ditch down there at the end of that string.
Yeah. We'll, we'll look at that tomorrow and see what, see if Billy helps, not, we can get, we've got a new bush hog, go down and try it out. Scotty didn't smile.
That'll help a whole lot, I think, sure will.
Okay. Anything else, Tootie?
No.
Okay. Clayton?
No, sir.
Gina?
No.
Dennis?
Just, by the way, unfinished regarding the committee meeting, and you touched on it, Mayor, I think. But I think the partners are going to be willing to help pay for the feasibility study and the pro forma study. So it won't be the city just biting the whole thing, I think.
I'm sorry to hear.
The, the hospital foundation.
Gotcha.
And also the county. Tourism, not so sure about tourism, but I, but I think the other two are willing to be partners and pay for it.
We'll know more tomorrow, they, they meet tomorrow, we'll know more about that tomorrow, what their participation is going to be.
And I think one good, my recommendation would be to maybe fund it through the, we put some money in for economic development. And I can't imagine, I mean, that seems like economic development to me, if we could get the rec center, and that way you wouldn't have to amend the budget. Yeah. That's just update.
Okay.
Actually, there is money in the health flex in the budget.
Yeah. I'm not sure what the cost was, but initial studies has indicated about $10,000 apiece. And I talked to some other rec facilities, and it's, he said that's pretty much the standard rate, give or take.
You say $10,000 total?
No, for each study, for a feasibility study and a pro forma study.
So that's something, as we get more information on that, they're looking into it right now, we'll, we'll have some numbers on that, hopefully, maybe. What do you think, within the next month, probably?
Probably next month.
Okay.
The one I talked to said they could probably have something next week or two, as far as their, their bid on it. And then the board would have to meet and make a recommendation, and then everybody have to bring it back to their people to see if they want to fund it.
Right.
So that's where everything's going to take a long time to, to do much.
Sabrina?
I'm good.
Earlene?
Tammy?
DJ?
All right. Yes, sir.
We finished for the stadium wall today on the, on the new transportation building. They're telling me that they're kind of lying, that they're looking to possibly be able to direct the forms off of that tomorrow or the next day back to us. And maybe even forward the form on the vaccination, if the weather cooperates. We, we have taken photographs with the drone, and I'll make them available to you all as soon as we get a chance to have you out, or we consult them. And a lot of them are the same picture.
Well, I, I called Wesley and asked for the site last Monday, I guess, when it was, whenever. No, yet and yet, so.
I'm hoping to put that in a, in a drop box or a photo book or something.
Right.
So that we can kind of watch the preparation of it as we go around the whole west, and I help out too.
Yeah.
So that's kind of applying on that.
Yeah, I'd like to see what you've done so far, if you can get it.
It's coming together fairly well, you can kind of picture it now, you know, so. All right, new business, Grayson County Alliance, Christmas baskets for the ministerial association. So I'll tell you what, how I was approached. I was approached by, by them, the ministerial association, I think, is they're not going to continue to do their Christmas baskets. They do seven to eight hundred baskets a year at Christmas. The alliance, I think, has agreed to take that over. They're looking for some financial help with that. Lori and I talked, and I don't know, did she talk to you about, we talked with the county today and asked them how they allocated the funds? Because they usually allocate funds to them without getting in a bind with the auditor. And did she?
I spoke with Jeff, our auditor.
Okay.
And he said that he agrees that that LGEA funds that we get, you can donate that, you can use that money for that. Because it is for poor or handicapped or disabled. So the food pantry is donating it that way, and that that would not cause any trouble in the audit as far as using those monies.
And that's the severance funds that we receive every year.
How much is it? How much is that, Gary?
The LGE, it, it just differs. Yeah, it varies, I'd have to pull out, I didn't bring my budget.
They had asked the county, I think, for $5,000.
And that did them all?
No, that, that's, they were hoping for that same amount from us, is what they were hoping, so. And I'm sure probably some other entities around, because I, I said, 700 baskets, about $30 a basket is what they're. So you're talking about $20,000 or so total. Is that something you guys want to think about a little further, you want to vote on it now? I'm sure they'd like an answer pretty quickly. Would you like to mull it over and maybe send us an email next day or two? I mean, you, you guys tell me how you want to move forward.
Sabrina, we have the money that can be allocated for that, is that what you're saying?
I don't know, we do, we can use the money if we can find it in the budget. Which I feel like there is a place somewhere in the budget that is already budgeted for to do this, as far as the general and admin budget. And we won't get in any trouble with the audit as far as doing that. So I feel like it would be okay without amending the budget unless the mayor goes crazy and spends all the money on something else. But he's not going to do that.
Mayor don't spend much money.
Yeah, so I'm just saying, I feel like.
I would like to know how to divvy that out, as far as, how do you get it? Who registers, who receives it, who don't receive it?
The, the Christmas baskets?
The Christmas basket.
Oh, yeah, I don't know anything about the Christmas basket.
If it's set on income, if it's.
Yeah, I don't know that.
Just anybody that signs up, if.
I think, I'll, I'll back up on this, I may need to, Billy, but I think it's, I think it's, it's about everybody that, that says they need one. I don't think they turn anybody away.
Well, I figured that's about how many put their head at the food pantry.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm guessing that, they've always said in seven or eight hundred families.
Yeah. Probably so, and they usually do this at the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I don't, I don't know, I, I, just in my mind, over the years, I've heard about it, heard people talk about it. I, I don't think they turn anybody away.
Like, anybody, like, anybody from the community can go?
See, I, I.
You know, when, when, when the county, when the county gave out water when we were out of water, I was out there and there was some.
When we were out of water, yeah, I remember that.
There was some, I'll stop there, there was just a lot of water given out.
So maybe could you get her to send us some information? Would that be helpful, Mayor?
It can, I, I can ask Dustin, Dustin Hayes is the one that actually reached out to me. So I can get with him tonight when I, when we get done.
When do they need an answer?
I told him I'd try to let him know something this week, that I would mention it to you guys and, and let you think about it. But I'll find out from him, and I'll just forward you all.
That sounds good.
What he sends me, because he reached out by text. Okay, I'll reach out to him tonight when we're done, ask him to send us the particulars on it. Okay. Any more new business? Okay, new business, Billy?
No, sir.
Okay, Terry?
No.
Tootie?
No, sir.
Gina? Danny?
Just for everybody's information, Grayson County Historical Society is going to have a show and tell at the Center on Main on Saturday from two to four. So if you've got an antique you want to bring it down there and tell everybody what it's about, we're going, they're trying something new to see if they can get some interest in doing stuff like that. And if you want to sell it, you can sell it too, just.
How's your city tour go?
Did pretty good, we had about forty, forty-four, I think, something like that.
Nice.
And it, it, one thing was kind of helpful in that Allison had put down, like, pictures of the buildings when they were built, what it looked like. So you could do the on your phone and look at, you know, put on your phone, say, okay, this is what, you know, Dave Vickery's office looked like when it was a bank in 1896. And it was standalone by itself, and then different time periods. So that was kind of helpful, that was interesting, but had pretty good turnout. And there's been some talk about doing, putting something like that, where you have a, was it QR code? On the buildings, and give a little historical information on the buildings with pictures like that. So people can walk by and we're just going to maybe write something up and talk to tourism, see if they'd be willing to fund something like that. Which I think would be kind of neat for the square downtown.
Would be.
Yeah, I'd like to see them get the same kind of font on all the addresses.
Yeah.
Simple stuff for us, EMS wise, I mean, just.
Y'all getting ready to move.
Front of the building, you know? I mean, you go through there and you have to start looking at windows, and hopefully somebody's got an address on their window.
Oh, you're talking about, yeah, okay.
Yeah, just around the square.
Yeah.
That's it.
Danny? Sabrina? Earlene? Tammy?
This weekend at Bevel Park, there's going to be a Fit Fiddle Pumpkin Walk. Brandy Lee's been working really hard on this, we have so far five companies that are participating. It'll be Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so if you guys wouldn't mind going out there and checking it out, I'm sure she would appreciate it.
Have you made the park spooky?
It's just the one trail between the, where the driveway starts to go to the parking lot, all the way to the softball. She's going to have it completely decorated, and each company will have a theme for their pumpkins, and there'll be a contest, so people judging it also. She wants to make it bigger, but we're starting out small.
I crawl for you to walk, don't you?
Hey, I did have one more thing, last year you gave away an award for the best dressed house for Halloween, and you gave a trophy out to that member. And I was thinking, maybe you need to do the same thing this year.
Could.
I think we could come up with a trophy for that.
We probably can, I've got one, my office one probably used. That somebody gave me, that I didn't win. Okay, DJ?
Oh, come on, DJ.
Last chance. All right, guys, other business reminder, there will be a fire department committee meeting on November 4th at 5:00 PM. The next chamber lunching is Thursday, November 14th, please let Lori know by noon on November 8th if you plan to attend. Finance officer Sabrina Whitaker has provided copies of the cash and cash equivalents and CD balances for informational purposes. And these are two colored printed pages that you have. So if you have any questions about how much money we got, call Sabrina. If there's no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourned.
Motion by Clayton.
Second.
Second by Billy, all in favor?
Aye.